Call to order Village of Hazelcrest, our regular board meeting, special board meeting at seven o'clock. Pledge of allegiance, trustee Rogers.
...of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Osbary.
Here.
And trustee Grant.
Here.
Trustee Moore.
Here.
Trustee Ramsey.
Present.
Trustee Rias.
Here.
Trustee Rogers.
Present.
Trustee Slaton.
Here.
We have a quorum. Reverend Johnson for prayer.
Gracious Father Almighty, God, we just come thanking and praising you, Lord God. Father, we thank you for this wonderful glorious day, oh God. Father, we thank you for everything that you're doing for our city, Lord God. We thank you for all the board members, Lord God. We ask that you would continue to move us into that place that you would have us to be, in the mighty name of Jesus. We thank you and we praise you and we call it done, in the name of the Father, in the name of the Son, and in the name of the Holy Spirit. It is so, amen.
Thank you. Any requests possibly, Moore?
None.
Any correspondence?
None.
Mayor report, this is my report, that we've been working with, the South Suburban Mayor's managers has been working with Cook County to deal with the class eight tax that they have on businesses. They're looking to move that tax back so that local businesses will not be overtaxed and actually stay in our communities in the Southland. Also, I will be going to the National Conference League of Cities this week in North Carolina to look at ideas and things that we could do in our village and the surrounding area. And with that, that is my report.
At this time, we're going to have the swearing in. Sergeant Daryl.
Derrick.
Derrick. Derrick Pierce, promotion to sergeant. Mr. Court, go ahead.
Mr. President, trustee citizens, as you may or may not know, Village of Hazelcrest does promotions through testing, through a testing process, and so there's a very lengthy process that you have to do to make the list. And the person who is next on the list for promotion to sergeant in our department is Officer, soon to be Sergeant Derrick Pierce, and he's due to be sworn in as a sergeant this evening.
I say your name.
I, Derrick Derrick Pierce.
Do follow this word.
Do follow this word.
That will support the Constitution.
That will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And abide by all ethics and requirements.
And abide by all ethics and requirements.
Per the Village of Hazelcrest.
Per the Village of Hazelcrest.
The county.
The county.
And the State of Illinois.
And the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duty.
Discharge the duty.
Of Sergeant, Officer Sergeant.
Yes, sir.
Sergeant, policeman. Sergeant, policeman.
Sergeant, I will faithfully discharge the duty of Sergeant.
Policeman of the Village of Hazelcrest. To the best of my ability. Congratulations.
And his wife, this is his wife pinning his badge on.
Thank you.
We can get the family up here to take, family come on now, don't be shy, family come on up here, it's your time to take pictures and to get in a picture.
We got a whole lot.
One, two, three. One more. Alright, great.
Alright, so family come on up. Family and friends, my cowboy family.
Alright, we're gonna count you down in one, two, three. One more.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Hey, man, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Is that a, is that a new, a new uniform or is it in stripes? Mr. Mayor, can I just briefly say something real quick? Back in 1998, I was standing on the Cook County stage graduating from the Police Academy, and my cousin Mike, who was a retired streamer cop, he pinned my, pinned the first badge on my chest, so I just felt this.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we have one more person up. Sergeant Pierce, this, I got some more stuff for you.
Thank you.
We have one, have an appointment or transition.
He does not need you. Chief, introduce.
Most of you all already know one of our senior sergeants, Sergeant Mitchell. As you may or may not know, what's kind of causing all this moving around is that we had a sergeant that retired. He was our detective sergeant, he ran that division. And so we went through a selection process to determine which sergeant would be the next sergeant to go back there, and we had, it was a difficult decision, very difficult decision, we got a lot of qualified sergeants, but ultimately, the decision was made that Sergeant Dale Mitchell will be put back there, so he is being reassigned as detective sergeant.
I'm gonna get my boy, you know.
One, two, three. One more.
I got my little brother-in-law. Come on up here, family. Family, come on up here, take my little law.
My brother-in-law.
Come in, son. There we go. And one, two, three. One more. Last one.
Alright. And Mayor, just so you all know, we have, our officers do a tremendous job every day, and we're just so proud of the stripes they're making in their career and just do a tremendous job in serving the Village of Hazelcrest, so thank them very much. Yep. Okay. Okay. Management's report.
No report.
I see Murphy must have left out illegal.
Yes, he did. Um, no report. He covered legal.
Police? Sergeant Mitchell.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to have him step back in here because a few of these things pertain to him. We've been talking about our, our active shooter, and it's just a tragedy that is really coming to the forefront. You all have been hearing me talk about it for several months, about us doing active shooter training for the churches, and we are, actually Carolyn has a meeting set up where we're gonna, gonna meet with some of the ministers, but because he's over the investigative division, one of his responsibilities is also community policing, and so he's really hit the ground running, even though he's just officially starting today, he's already been doing some things, so he's gonna be working hand in hand. Because the mayor and the board has been so proactive in wanting these programs brought to Hazelcrest, we were ahead of the curve. And once again, it was a tragedy that you had the church shooting last week, but we were already on track to have training for active shooter training in churches, so he's gonna be helping me with that. Also, the Citizens Police Academy, we've been talking about that for several months. Now, he's already got dates in place for the Citizens Police Academy. The thing that we want to do is, we're not gonna rush it because we want to make sure we get a good turnout, because when people apply, we gotta do background checks on them and everything else, so that takes some time, and we want to make sure that we get a full class. So, he's already initiated the process, but he's already, once again, he's hit the ground running, and he's gonna be working, he'll be doing a lot of that leg work, but then we're gonna be able to really get things up and going to get the, the mayor and the board's vision on the activities that we want in town, so I just want you to be here so that they can know that this is the man who will be handling all that. Thank you, sir. Just so everybody knows, we have right now, we, you know we were testing, we're down to five individuals who have made it, who are gonna end up being on our qualification list. We've got preliminary rankings out right now, we'll have the final rankings out in about a week. I want to give Deputy Chief White a great kudos, he's been responsible for putting together this testing process, he's done all the leg work for, and he's just done, done a tremendous job on, on getting this process together. Another thing we're gonna be doing is working with Carolyn and the cable channel and doing safety tips, and we're gonna have the officers, each month, we're gonna have a different officer give safety tips. We had Officer Cotton give safety tips, you all may have seen it, he did safety tips for Halloween, and Felice, and Felice did a tremendous job of editing it, you know, these two are just, he was among his professionals in putting together that film, so we're gonna be working with them on a monthly basis. And just personally, I want to make sure that we're sharing safety tips with you all. It's the holiday season, and things happen all year round, but we all know that things are kind of heightened during the holiday season. So, just some basic things that we see. Do not leave your car running in the driveway in the morning and go back in the house. First of all, it's against village ordinance, so you can get a local ordinance violation, but you know, there are some newer cars that when you hit the remote start, it will not allow your car to go in gear, and you can't take it. But even with those cars, people may not know that, and they'll try to steal your car, so they're gonna do damage to it. So, don't leave your car running outside. That's one thing. You all have seen that there's a lot of carjacking's been going on in the city and things to that effect, those things can happen anywhere, and we want to make sure that we're being safe. And the most thing, the most positive thing that you can do, or the easiest thing that you can do, is be a difficult victim. Always pay attention to your surroundings, make sure you're looking to see what's going on at all times, so, and it's not gonna stop everything, but people who are looking to do harm to people are looking for easy targets. And if you're somebody who's always got your head on the swivel, when you're pulling up to the stoplight, leave some room between you and the cars, be in front of you, so that if something happens, you can get out of those situations. So, there's some real fundamental things, and one last thing on that, just like, I have, I get on my wife about this all the time. My wife has her little bags that she uses when she goes to the store, and when she's not using them, she leaves them laying on the seat in the car. Well, she knows there's nothing in those bags, but when somebody's looking in the car, they don't necessarily know that. So, make sure you're not leaving stuff sitting on your bag, and most cars, most cars that get broken into, the doors are left unlocked. So, something fundamental like locking your car doors, a lot of people don't do that. So, those are just some, some tips for, not just the holiday season, but all year round to make ourselves safe. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works. Special Services.
Good evening, everyone, I have a couple of items here. The village has completed with their fast-track demolition project before the deadline. Beckstein took care of it before the end of the month, so you see, if you have these packets, you see before and after pictures of our fast-track demolition project, it was a great success. Also, we have a special use permit coming up on November 29th, it's for a proposed daycare facility at 17100 West 171st Street, it's for suites F, G, and H. Also, you may see these signs up, these green signs up at the metro station, on the south end, they're gonna start demolition November 20th, so this has been notified on the metro station. And last, our deadline for our code enforcement officer is tomorrow, we have a couple of summits for that, but tomorrow's the deadline. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Again, you notice he announced about the metro station, they have started the rehab of the Hazelcrest metro station, so I think one entrance of it is closed, is at the south entrance. And then, once they, once they finish with that part, they will begin the north entrance. We're looking at a completion date for the $3 million metro station to be in July. Just give you update.
Okay. Human Resources. Fire. Community and Business Development.
Good evening, Mayor, trustee, resident. The clergy commission and Chief Davis are having a roundtable discussion on safety in the place of worship. This should be on our cable channel within the next week or so. We're happy that Chief Davis agreed to do the active shooter training for the churches because you could see as the results of that Sunday, how important it is to be prepared. We're also doing a groundbreaking ceremony for the metro station on November 29th at 10 o'clock AM if anyone would like to attend. On Sunday, December 3rd, we're having our first craft and vendors fair. We have several vendors, I mean, JD has been working very hard on creating vendors and crafters to come to this big fair, so we're looking for additional vendors, and if you like to craft in or holiday shopping, please make sure you come. Saturday, Saturday, Friday, December 8th is our holiday tree lighting at Fire Station Two on 175th Street from 6 to 8, and all are welcome. Thank you.
Economic Development. Can I get a motion for public participation regarding items that are on the agenda?
I move that we open for public participation for items that are on the agenda.
They're moved by trustee Slaton, second by trustee Ramsey, to open for public participation for items that are on the agenda. This time, if anything on the agenda, agenda that you would like to speak to as an audience or as a citizen, this is the time to do it, you have three minutes to speak. Can I get a motion to close? Is the items on the agenda, it's not open? They're only on the agenda?
I move that we close public participation.
They're moved by trustee Ramsey, second by trustee Rogers, close participational items on the agenda, all's in favor? Okay. Pending business, trustee Grant.
Thank you, President Osbary. I move to approve the regular meeting minutes of October 24th, 2017, and the special meeting minutes of October 26th, 2017.
They're moved by trustee Grant, second by trustee Ramsey, to approve the regular meeting minutes of October 24th, 2017, and the special meeting minutes of October 26th, 2017. Any discussion on this item? Roll call, please. Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Moore.
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey.
Yes.
Trustee Rias.
Yes.
Trustee Rogers.
Yes.
Trustee Slaton.
Yes.
Motion carries. Trustee Moore.
Thank you, President Osbary. I move to approve accounts payable number 18-13 dated November 13, 2017, in an amount of $515,956.72.
Second.
Second.
The reason, the amount is different because we removed an invoice for $598, 500, yeah, $598, so the amount was reduced. So, the correct amount is $515,956.72.
They're moved by trustee Moore, second by, who seconded that?
I did.
Grant, to approve accounts payable number 18-13 dated November 13, 2017, in amount of $519,000.
No. No.
Yeah, you got, got good handwriting like mine. Any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Moore.
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey.
Yes.
Trustee Rias.
Yes.
Trustee Rogers.
Yes.
And trustee Slaton.
Yes.
Motion carries. Trustee Ramsey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion, move to approve the unidirectional flushing program proposal for M.E. Simpson.
Second.
They're moved by trustee Ramsey, second by trustee Moore, to approve a unidirectional flushing program proposed by M.E. Simpson. Madam manager, explain this a little bit to the public.
It's where they will come through and then they will flush the pipes, and as they flush the pipes, it's to get all the sediments out, and it will be primarily done in the pharmacy.
Any discussion on this item?
One quick question, do we know when they will start?
No, I have to ask. It'll be soon.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Moore.
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey.
Yes.
Trustee Rias.
Yes.
Trustee Rogers.
Yes.
Trustee Slaton.
Yes.
Motion carries. Trustee Rogers. Rias, sorry. Rogers, Ramsey, and Rias. Trustee Rias.
I motion to approve an agreement with Bravo Services Incorporated for the cleaning services.
Second.
We moved by trustee Rias, second by trustee Moore, to approve agreement with Bravo Services Incorporated for Cleaning Services. Madam manager, explain what cleaning services is.
The new, it'll be a new cleaning company, and they will clean the village hall, the police station, all of what the old cleaning service was doing along with the back senior center. They will start their cleaning on January 1st, we will notify the current cleaning company where our contract says that we just have to give them 30 days, so we will issue them a letter tomorrow.
Question.
Yes.
Did we speak to this as being a one-year contract, right?
Yes.
A one-year contract?
One-year contract.
That, because it doesn't say, this is the old one.
Yeah, it's a one-year contract.
It's a one-year contract, okay.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Moore.
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey.
Yes.
Trustee Rias.
Yes.
Trustee Rogers.
Yes.
Trustee Slaton.
Yes.
Motion carries. Trustee Rogers.
I move to approve an agreement with Environmental Protection Industries, EPI, for the demolition and UST removal proposal at NWC 175th Street and Dixie Highway.
They're moved by trustee Rogers, second by trustee Ramsey, to approve agreement with Environmental Protection Industries for the demolition of the UST removal proposal for the NWC 175th Street and Dixie Highway. Madam manager?
This is the removal of the gas station on 175th and Dixie Highway. The gas station will be torn down and the tanks will be removed.
Do we have a date for that to happen?
He said by the end of December.
Yeah, he said it will be a month, once we had it approved, and then the funds will come out of motor fuel.
Is he here? He's here.
Yeah. Did you want us, it'll be about 30 days after it's approved, correct?
Thirty, 35 days, we should be able to get that one completed.
Thank you very much.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Moore.
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey.
Yes.
Trustee Rias.
Yes.
Trustee Rogers.
Yes.
Trustee Slaton.
Yes.
Motion carries. Trustee Slaton.
Thank you, President Osbary.
No, you have to jump down to H.
Oh, okay, yeah, we have to back for that one. Trustee Moore.
Okay. Sorry, I lost us, huh? Motion to approve the health insurance rates.
Second.
They're moved by trustee Moore, second by trustee Grant, to approve the health insurance rates which were described to us earlier. Any discussion on this item, and madam manager just give a general overview of the health insurance.
Every year, we have to go through renewal of our insurance rates, and this year, we had a good report. Our insurance rates decreased versus increasing every year that it has been, and so we are happy to pass, have the board vote and pass this on, and so it will, although it's a small decrease, but every little bit helps.
What, can I ask what, what Ashley brought it down? The rate?
Good evening, Mike Wojcick from the Horton Group. Combination of things, every year, the carriers look at the participants, the demographics, the risk score of that, of those participants, meaning are there any large claims that are ongoing that they're concerned about, and what the market's doing. So, medical trend, now, medical trend has been high single digits into the low double digits, but the performance of your plan, because of the design of it, HMO and Health Savings Account, High Deductible Health Plan, has engaged your members positively, where the performance of the plan has performed better than expected.
Mike, is it safe to say that once, or if the wellness part of that is added to it, it would even show more decrease?
That, that is our recommendation, that it will mitigate some of the rise that's just going on in the market just because medical inflation is, is so high still. Yes, so that is intention to offset that.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mike. Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Moore.
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey.
Yes.
Trustee Rias.
Yes.
Trustee Rogers.
Yes.
Trustee Slaton.
Yes.
Motion carries. Trustee Ramsey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move to consider an approval for, to conduct truth in taxation hearing.
Second.
Moved by trustee Ramsey, second by trustee Grant, to consider and approve, to conduct a truth in taxation hearing. Madam manager?
What the village is discussing now is that property taxes will go up at the, before we do the next levy, and the purpose, the reason they're going up primarily is because according to state law, we have to fund the police and fire pensions at the actuarial value, that we have to behold in, I think it's 20 by 2040. However, what we, all municipalities have been doing is funding at the state requirement, and the state has now said that if we do not fund the pensions at its actuarial value, they have the right to go in and deduct the money that we do not fund from our property tax, which reduces the amount of money that is available to the, to the village to do regular services. And so the truth in taxation hearing is typically what we've done in past years, is that taxes have been raised by 4.99 percent, and this year, they will exceed 4.99, so there will be a truth in taxation. This year, they will exceed four point nine-nine, so there will be a truth in taxation hearing.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Rias?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Slaton?
Yes.
Motion carries. At this time, we have two items on the agenda that we cannot address, but we have to go into executive session. Uh, so I'm not opening to the public till we come back out because we have items that they can't talk about. So at this point, I wanted to move to go into executive session.
Move to executive session to discuss items on the agenda. So I need to identify those items, E and, I mean, uh, EF and G?
Yes. Okay, second.
Second.
They move by trustee Ramsey, second by trustee, uh, Rogers, uh, to go into executive session to discuss personnel. Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Rias?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Slaton?
Yes.
Motion carry. We adjourn, or we'll return. Can I get a motion to reconvene the, uh, Hazelcrest Village Special Meeting?
Move to reconvene the village special meeting.
Second. They move by trustee Ramsey, second by trustee Rias, reconvene the village Hazelcrest Special Meeting. Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Rias?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Slaton?
Yes.
Motion carry. Can I get a motion open for public participation for items on the agenda?
We're not doing the motions first?
We need to, uh, finish the agenda first and then we'll go.
I'm sorry, when did you get that part ready? My bad. Okay, uh, uh, trustee Grant, no, not trustee Grant. Trustee Slaton.
Thank you, President Osberry. I move to approve a collective bargaining agreement between the village of Hazelcrest and the Union Metropolitan Alliance of Police Chapter seven oh two, sworn patrol officers, expiring April thirtieth, two thou- twenty twenty.
Second.
They move by trustee Slaton, second by trustee Moore, to approve a collective bargaining agreement between the village of Hazelcrest and the Union Metropolitan Alliance of Police Officers, Police Chapter seven oh two, sworn patrol officers, expiring April thirtieth, twenty twenty. Any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Rias?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Slaton?
Yes.
Motion carries. Trustee Grant?
Thank you, President Osberry. I move to authorize the manager to execute the general release and settlement agreement for the village of Hazelcrest in case number sixteen dash CV dash zero eight six six three, and any and all pending related matters.
Second. They move by trustee Grant, second by trustee Rias, to authorize village manager to execute the general release settlement and dismissal of, uh, case number sixteen CB zero eight six six three and any and all pending related matters. Any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Rias?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Slaton?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. At this time, uh, can I get a motion to open, uh, to public? The village board meeting, uh, to any items, uh, they wish to discuss?
I move that we open the meeting to the public for any items for discussion.
Second. They move by trustee, uh, Slaton, second by trustee Ramsey, to open a meeting for public discussion. All's in favor?
Aye.
You have three minutes. Come forward. Put your speaker down. I can't hear you.
Will you speak?
Go a little slower. Um, actually, I'm here just to remind everybody that on, um, December eighth, President Osberry and Community Relations will be having our tree lighting ceremony. And, uh, we would like to thank Chief Jackson for letting us use the facilities that'll be at the fire station. And we're still looking for donations for, like, stocking stuffers and stuff like that. But it'll be December eighth from six to eight, six to eight.
Where, uh, where, yeah, where do we drop off, I mean?
Drop off any donations here at the village, here at the village hall.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thanks for the new road on one hundred and seventy fifth. I love it. I'm here to talk about the trailer court and the fence that you want to put up. I lived in, uh, Dixmoor for about a year inside their trailer court and they have fences. There's two trailer courts there and they're all fenced in. Uh, the city of Oak Forest is, uh, tearing out their, uh, trailer court, which I heard you like to do at our trailer court, but anyway. Um, the fence, I, um, bordered onto the fence. There's a, a neighbor next door to me. He's, owns his house. And supposedly, somebody else, a big family bought the trailer right next to me. And they're scared about the guy's dog and stuff like that. Every time I try to get a hold of Gabriel Kill Hill, he's always out of the country because he works for Goldman Sachs. And I believe that that trailer court is, uh, mortgaged out, you know, for his other properties around the s- the country, or around the world supposedly. I guess he has a million-dollar apartment in Chicago. And, uh, the, the story that I got about the reason they're not going to put a fence up is because all the contractors that they've talked to won't put it in paper. And I really been lied to a lot since I've been there, unsolicited lies. I didn't even ask for the truth and I get supposedly the fire marshals after me, whoever the fire marshal is. And, uh, so I really don't like being lied to and, uh, I'm, uh, the manager's taking care of my, uh, personal, uh, trailer problem. But, uh, the, I want a fence and we deserve a fence. Uh, my window was recently broken and three of my neighbors have broken windows. It's a regular occurrence that things end up missing. Oh, and the better story, I've lived in this wonderful town for two years now. I actually fell into Cherry Creek a couple of summers ago, which is one of the, the main reasons that the fence is needed. And quite often, it seems like single fathers are bringing their kids to school and the kids just naturally go towards the creek and then they end up yelling at them and threatening them and stuff like that. So I want a fence and, uh, we deserve a fence. He has the money. And, um... There's, oh, there's been so many tigers that have been cut around there in random acts of, like, vandalism. So I'd like a fence.
Okay. Thank you so much.
So we'll, I'll talk to you, we'll talk to you tomorrow when we come out.
If anyone wants Gabriel Kill Hill's phone number, I got it.
You can give it to us tomorrow.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Can I get a motion to close public participation?
Good evening.
Good evening.
President Osberry and those that are before me. My name, uh, is Anell Melton. I'm here because I see a little piece on the TV, so I thought I would make a meeting today. But I just wanted to say a few things that I wanted to mention to you guys. President Osberry, I appreciate and I am so happy with the way that you're doing things. Wish I could keep you in there forever. I've seen so much improvement. You've done a great job. I enjoy all the, uh, entertainments that you had at the festival. The parade was just awesome. I appreciate that. And another thing, um, I want to speak on behalf of the fire department. On the open house fire department, uh, my grandkids and I had a chance to visit the fire department and some of the things that were going on at the fire department. I figure that something that we of the village, uh, the resident of Hazelcrest can do, I am more than willing to do, which I have done. We should be able to donate a pound of bacon, a bag of grits, a loaf of bread, or whatever, because those firemen, they buys their own grocery. And, uh, I think that would be a big help to them. They have families and we as citizens, we should be able to, you know, help them out to those that, well, I know we all can afford to go to all ages and help them out a little bit because Chief Jackson is one of the best. I've known him for years and he keeps that place just going smoothly. So I appreciate you guys' time. I know I'm called a troublemaker, but that's okay. As long as I am on the right-hand side, I am good. So God bless you guys and God bless the United States of America. Thank you guys so much.
That's Anell and thank you. And all this great work is also all the staff and volunteers and the commissions who make it happen. So, uh, thank you for that.
It's a hard act to follow. Good evening.
Good evening.
I wanted to say, um, on the improvements, that street going through proper. I take that street going to church, it's just as smooth as it can be. So I appreciate that. And I wanted to, um, let you know that on December the first, we'll be having our annual holiday party. We will have two schools, junior choirs.
Senior commission.
Senior holiday party, December the first, from eleven to two. We're gonna have two of the local schools, their choirs will be coming out. And we're gonna have Wanda and the Wonderful's. That's a dupe group.
Yes.
And they will be entertaining us also. So I hope everybody can come. Pardon me? At the senior center from eleven to two. Thank you. And of course, after the party, there will be line dancing.
Hello, 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 everybody?
Good evening.
My name is Les Sanders, seventh carriageway. And I'm in charge of fun for the village. In case you didn't know it, I wasn't voted in. You took the dog over the job. Been nice, too. We just want to say that the grandparent readers over at the Highland School are looking for volunteers to assist us in reading to the kids every Wednesday, ten o'clock in the morning. Uh, I've been going in a little while. It's quite enjoyable. If you got time and you say you ain't doing nothing, you want something to do, come on out and, and read with us and we can maybe increase this to all the schools in the area. These schools need some volunteers. Number two. Let me take you on a journey. We're taking down statues everywhere. Now we want to add something instead of tearing down. Where is my Martin Luther King Drive in the south suburb? Where, what town got a Martin Luther King Drive? Think about it. I know you ain't thought about it. That's why you ain't did nothing about it. Because you never thought about it. We don't have a Martin Luther King Drive from nowhere. So I think the village of Hazelcrest should initiate a Martin Luther King Drive and bag in and pull out.
Anyone else? Can I get a motion to close public participation?
Motion to close public participation.
I second it.
They move by trustee Moore, second by trustee Rias, to close public participation. All's in favor?
Aye.
I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening. Also, remember that we have a, a donation box out front here in the village hall taking all pair- non-perishable items for the holidays. We can give to families that need those items. So if we have a box out there, please bring any non-perishable items here for the holidays and we'll greatly, greatly, uh, uh, take them in and make sure that families who need them will actually, uh, receive them. Again, thanks for coming out. Thanks for the kind words. And thanks you all for being Hazelcrest proud.